There was some discussion about wanting to have a discussion about it. Because we haven't done so. Certainly, love to discuss it now. If not, certainly can discuss it at a more opportune time. But we do need to discuss it. So I have and would like to bring forth a resolution that was actually submitted by the residents who would like to repeal that measure on December 13. Now, in talking with some of the members of the body, they felt that they didn't want to do it tonight or this evening. That's the only reason why I didn't bring it forth. But I do intend to do so. I have a copy for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? Okay, the only thing I'm going to say is that we did have a launch of the Project Hope. Hopefully, you saw the announcement. We're going to be moving forward, you know, with that in the attempts of building stronger community bonds and, you know, taking care of some of the problems, you know, that we're encountering with that. There will be more to come as, you know, we go forward. But, you know, once again, as we go into our next 60 years, you know, this is the beginning of, you know, the new type of situation we're going to have in Virginia Beach with, you know, bringing forward and including more community engagement. But also, you know, Dr. Ross Hammond headed up the Idea Commission, and that was Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility. And we did a couple focus groups, you know, with a, you know, very good eclectic view of, you know, our community. And mental health is by far one of the biggest, you know, situations we've had. I've had preliminary discussions with Michael and Jennifer about, you know, you know, really helping out. We've got to do something, you know, with mental health in this city that really, really helps out in terms of what we're going to be doing. But we're also going to be talking about job creation. We're going to be talking about more, about trade schools and getting people placed in the right thing, you know, you know, big, you know, and different types of programs that will help our youth. And, you know, hopefully, we're going to be the template going forward about how a community can come together.
Hope, where he had working not only but in smaller, you know, sections and actually giving a certificate, you know, gives some Bible thing of the work the people have done. So that kind of translates from coming from the mayors, the birth, you know, inclusion and so forth on, especially since that was one of our key areas, was mental health.
And, you know, the same, you know, thing is also working with the other mayors in the region. We'll make sure you'll get a copy of the analysis that a couple of the city managers did, you know, about some of the problems confronting all the different cities and everything. And so, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll get that out to you. And, but once again, you know, this is the first of, but once again, you know, what we do here in informal, we always have, you know, a part where we can discuss discussions and initiatives or, you know, concepts, ideas that you may have that you want to bring forward or work with and, you know, things of that nature. So always feel free to, you know, speak up.
Nice rollout, Bobby.
What's that?
Nice rollout.
No, thank you. No, then, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to be moving forward with this and, you know, and, you know, let everybody know the city that we really are. Thank you. All right, at this point, let's go onto council agenda.
Okay, so the first thing I wanted to talk about was the resolution for Aaron Rouse. The manager talked to Aaron, and he said that not doing it today was okay with him. Duhaney.
Yeah, well, I suppose Mr. Ross indicated that he might be randomized whenever council feels like they want to.
And there was some concern with his four other council members who went off at the same time and then tried to have more of a cohesive group. And, and the mayor and I have talked about it, that we thought that it's, it's a very good thing to do, but it would be nice to do it more collectively and where, because you're sort of like picking and choosing when you just do one and not the others. So Bobby and I feel that way. Amelia, how do you feel?
Well, I think that's important is recognize all at once. Because when I was on before, it was just me. And that was done December, not the next year, because that's when I came off. So I think since we're going to do this, you know, bringing all who would like to, we saw the other message, who would like to have this all at once. And me, equity, something like that is good.
Michael.
I agree with Amelia, pardon me, council member, Dr. Ross Hammond.
Chris.
Had an opportunity to speak with Sabrina, and I don't understand her intention behind it. Aaron potentially going off to Senate, so.
Barth.
So I've spoken with several of you. First, I would say, I mean, is this a precedent we're shedding to recognize each and every member who departs council? And I'm a public, we're all public servants. So I mean, I'm not to, or recognition, but I'm not sure we all need to be hit on the back. But I do certainly value deeply our, all of our predecessors and they should be recognized. But in terms of the timing, I mean, Councilman Rouse, you know, could win, sure, and then he'll be in Richmond. So we have to work both schedules. So I think they all should be recognized same time if possible. So it's.
Robyn.
I concur with Dr. Ross.
Jennifer.
I will stay out of this one. Okay, I get it. I understand. It's really personal.
Yeah.
For scheduling to make sure everyone's available for the majority.
Josh.
I would so good concur with Dr. Ross Hammond, and I think it was a, was a good one. And importantly, I mean, I think Councilman Rouse needs to be okay with, with this. And it sounds like he, he was. So I mean, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Remick's sentiment that, that we're, we're not doing this job for a thing.
Well, that's what Lindwood said. In fact, it might be something for us to talk about at the retreat because we've really never done that before. I mean.
We've never done it before. We've never done it before. I've been off twice, and I didn't get a resolution either. We've never done it. So this is a new thing. If we're going to do it, we need to decide.
All right, Sabrina.
Given that I'm the sponsor of this resolution, you could have asked me first. I don't think any other council member around this table would appreciate anyone going around and asking to delay or to do something other than what the council member intended to do. I'm the author of that resolution. Just ask any of you want to be respected. You are supposed to respect the person who is the author of that resolution and ask me. That wasn't done here. I'll forgive and move past it. But please, in the future, if I am authoring something and I've requested it, please have the respect and courtesy to ask me first before you ask everybody else. Secondly, I'm not, I'm, I'm still speaking. Secondly, I just spoke to Mr. Rouse in the chambers. He's expecting to receive it. So that's not true. He said to me, whoever signs it, signs it. It's fine with him if you all don't want to sign it. But I have requested that he be honored because, in fact, January 11th, when the session starts in Richmond, he very well will likely be there. He's not going to be here on the 17th, more than likely. That's why I ask to honor him first. In terms of precedence and all, you're convoluting the issue. Don't do that. When we go and we honor other council members, we don't nearly have this much contention and disagreement and political maneuvering. Anytime you guys have asked me to honor somebody here, I've always been complicit, always. But when I ask to honor someone else, and this is probably my first time, I'm, I'm getting this political nuke maneuvering. The man is probably not going to be here on January 17th. Knowing that, why would you still try to honor someone and you know they're not going to be here? So I like to move forward with the request to honor Councilmember Rouse tonight, when he'll be here, as he expects. I just spoke with him face to face. Normally, I would have accepted what Mr. Duhaney said, but I just spoke with him. He is not in agreement on that. In fact, he said he'll be here, his daughter will be here. He'd like to be honored the day that he's expected to be here. So I'd ask, like to ask the body to have the courtesy to honor this man while he is here, in case he is not here on January 17th, to be honored with everyone else. In terms of getting a pat on the back, it has nothing to do with that. I have seen us honor folks time and time again, name buildings after people. I have not had a problem with that. I haven't brought up any of these issues. I could have, but I didn't because you give honor where honor is due. When people serve this community, it's not about them getting a pat. He didn't ask me to get a pat on the back. Has nothing to do with him running for Senate. The man has served this community. And I think we heard December 13th, the community came out and they said to you, do not honor some and not others. They said that. So don't do that. Because they will come out to tonight and say the same thing to you. Don't do that. It's not the best way to start off the new year. We on a new track? We on it? This is a new body, on a new trajectory? Don't start the new year off that way. I'm asking you, have the courtesy and the decency to honor this man while he is here, in case his work takes him to Richmond January 17th. And to your point, Vice Mayor Wilson, I sent you the initial email, my initial email. And I sent it to some of you here as well. The initial email never said to, to single anyone out. Don't say that. It's not true. You know the truth. The email specifies specifically to honor all the council members. It's there in black and white. I gave it to everybody. Send the email. The intention was to honor all individuals because you don't honor one without the other. I know that. Parents taught me well. What you want done for you, you do for others, and you are fair in doing so. That was always my intention. Feel free to honor those other individuals as I requested. Councilmember Tower, Miles, Linwood, he's, then he doesn't want it, that's fine. And the others who are listed there. Feel free to do that on the 17th. Please honor Aaron Rouse tonight while he is here expecting that honor. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Barbara, you want to say something?
Yeah. Well, it's much broader than this. We had a discussion several weeks ago about resolutions and the manner in which they get put on the agenda. And I thought we had kind of come to a policy that if somebody was going to put a resolution on, there at least had to be someone that agreed to second it and so forth. I think we're, we're very free with these resolutions that just pop up. And I'm not sure that it's the best way for us to introduce new issues and so forth. And, and I thought we were, maybe we didn't make a final decision at that time, but we certainly were discussing it because we are doing an awful lot with resolutions sometimes that maybe is not the best way to introduce even an issue and so forth. And so I, I think that's something that maybe we need to put on the agenda for our retreat to make sure how we're going to do this. But we are very free with passing out these resolutions in honor of various people. And they're passed around to us while we're trying to listen to people at the diocese. And I find that to be very objectionable because when I sign my name to something, I want to have read it first. And when I started reading the draft of this particular resolution and right at the very beginning, I could see a glaring error. I was surprised because I'm not going to put my name on something unless it's been checked and it's verified that everything in that resolution is accurate. And so my family agrees that that's not the way it is. So I think we've got to look at the whole issue of resolutions. And no one of us, I wouldn't think about putting on a resolution that I hadn't asked the staff to verify the accuracy. We've got to be sure if we're going to ask 11 people to sign our name to a resolution that we could say is accurate. So I think this whole issue of resolutions is a broad one that we need to talk about at the retreat. And as far as beginning this thing of having resolutions for people as they rotate off the council, we've never done it before. And one of these, one of the people called me very early and said, don't you give me a proclamation. I'm not coming down. I've said my thing the last December, and that's the end of it. So I think this is a, if, if we do this, we're going to be beginning something that we might want to think about. So I just think the whole issue needs a lot more discussion.
Yes, Sabrina.
So keeping in line with this specific resolution for Aaron Rouse, again, I don't want to convolute the issue of, of all different types of resolutions, but specifically when you honor a member of council is different than when you put in a, a request for a specific resolution for something else. You don't have to have a second to do that. I've never heard that when you honor someone who served on, on the city council. And so that's another thing. We can't make things up as we go along. We, if we've had precedent and we've done it that way, because you decide one day you don't want to do it or for whatever reason, you want to change it as we go along, you can't do that. That's not how a governing body operates. And so if you want to talk about it, or we want to talk about it during the council retreat that's coming up, that's fine. Don't have a problem with it. But don't try to change the ruse now. This has already been set in motion. And for the record, when I do something, I always confirm the process. I reached out to the clerk. How do we generally honor council members who've served on this body? And they told me by resolution or proclamation if, if we so desire. That's what we normally do. That's what we've always done. And I asked that specific question before I proceeded to do so. I'm not a maverick or rebel. I follow procedures when you have them. I follow protocol when you have them. But don't try to change things just because you don't want to do it for whatever reason. Don't do that here. You, if you want to change it for the retreat coming up, that's fine. Have a discussion about it. Write it down and then follow it. Because as was said before, I've never heard any of this conversation for things that you all want to do, for people you want to honor, for people you want to name buildings after. I've never, I've always been complicit. Follow your rules. Please follow the ruse as it pertains to the precedent that we've always honored council members who served on this body. And according to the clerk, it's been through resolution. So please follow that precedent.
Actually, as Barbara says, this is not the way we've done things. You were on here for four years. Everybody had a chance to have something to say before they, they left on the 13th. I, I do have a concern because we have an election going on. Will it look like we're endorsing a candidate? Which I don't think that that's a position we want to be in. But I think this is a really good retreat item. And do we want to start something your very, very first meeting that sets a new precedence that we haven't been doing? We have honored a lot of people that you, I'm trying to remember, the, the, the nice lady who lives in Bird Neck Point that had this beautiful business. And we, we've, we've done other things that you.
Angela Reddicks.
What's her name?
Angela Reddicks.
Yeah, Angela Reddicks.
Well, that, that was different. That's something different. Let's keep it germane to sitting council members that we are.
This is a, this is something new. And Barbara, who's.
It's not new. It's not new.
Sabrina, please.
She asked me. She brought my name up. I'm just responding.
Anyway, it, it, it really is something new, and Barbara has confirmed it. So it's, it's up to the group. I think maybe it's something Lindwood said we should probably have a discussion about this. It's important what we say. Words matter. And, and Aaron was a very important part of this body, and we enjoyed serving with him. So this is nothing personal about him. And I know you believe that. And, and I believe the city manager when he tells me something. So anyway.
Okay, Michael and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can appreciate the intent behind generating the resolution. I do, to a large extent, agree with the comments that Councilmember Remick made about, you know, I don't think anyone here comes here with an expectation they're going to receive a resolution upon their departure and hang it on their wall. But it's, it, it's nice to honor people because we all know that public service, whether you're elected official or city staff or a community volunteer, is a sacrifice. And it, it's a sacrifice that's a pleasure because you love our community. And, and, and each and every member of this body make a variety of sacrifices. So do other community leaders. But we're not here for the thanks. We're here for the work. We're here for our commitment to our community. We're here to set a good, positive path and momentum for our community. And so I think it is something we need to think about, about what precedent do we want to set? And then there are extraordinary circumstances about people who have served for decades or made extraordinary contributions. And I think each and every person brings an extraordinary perspective based on their life experiences. And Councilmember Rouse is no, is no exception to that. He's deserving of recognition. I fully support recognition. But I also think to single out one person, when you have, and I'm going to name them. Councilmember Moss, who served.
18 years.
18 years on this body. Councilmember Tower, who I sat next to for three and a half, three and a half years and served this with distinction. Councilmember Miles. Councilmember Branch. And who's the fifth one that I'm missing? It's terrible. Oh, Councilman, oh, good. I didn't want to be in the hot seat. And, and, and Councilmember Rouse would be the fifth one. Councilmember Holcomb is here with us. So you don't get one. I just think we should do this as a group. And this is no disrespect to Mr. Rouse. He's definitely, I had a privilege to serve with Mr. Rouse. And, and he brought a, a very important and valued and necessary perspective to everything we did here. And, and he is deserving of our recognition. But let's not sit here and pretend like we're not going to do this in a way that singles out one person over the others. Mr., nobody contacted Mr. Moss to, to find out if he could be here on January 3rd after 18 years of service to receive a recognition. Well, I'm not aware of it.
The clerk did. That's her job.
Well, I'm not aware of it.
Well, you are now.
If you don't mind not interrupting me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't go on with that false statement. That's not true.
Be recognized when you want to say so.
Thank you. I'm after.
If you don't mind, I'd like to finish. Thank you.
Go right ahead. I already said that.
Oh, thank you for your permission. I appreciate that. I just, and, and this just demonstrates, this exchange we just had just demonstrates the point. Let's do this the right way. Let's bring everybody together. And if it's not on January 17th and Mr. Rouse is elected to the Senate, it can be when, when he returns and we can honor everyone in a way that's equitable, that's fair, and that sets the right tone. Everybody who served deserves recognition, and I strongly feel that we should, I'm happy to do that. I'm not comfortable with proceeding today by selecting one individual member. I think it sends the wrong message. And, and I, I hope that that's the course this body will take.
Thank you. So the reason I responded to you, Councilmember Berluti, when you were talking, you said that you hadn't been, you know, been aware. So I was just letting you know. The clerk did call Mr. Moss. When I sent out the initial email to honor everyone, all the council members, including Councilmember Moss, who served for 18 years, that was always the intention to, to honor him for his service, just so you know, not singling anyone out. I have not done that. And that would never be my intention. We give honor where honor is due, and they all served. And that's why the email that I sent to Amanda stated that. Let's honor everyone. So I just want to be clear. Because at first we said we didn't want to, you know, I'm hearing that you don't want to do it because of singling someone out. I've explained to you that's not the intention of this issue. It is to make sure that Councilmember Rouse is here today as he is to receive that honor. Matter of fact, when I talked to him, he said, let me know what happens regarding the resolution when you all discuss it. So I can let him know that the decision was made not to do it tonight. That's fine. It, it is totally up to you, but it sends a strong message. And I'm hearing it clearly from all of you. What I would say, will say is just make sure, whatever the reason is, you're consistent. First, you're saying it's because I'm singling someone out. I'm not doing that. Then you said political motive. Vice Mayor Wilson, it's not a political motive. I, I, one thing I'll tell you about myself, I'm not into political maneuvering. I'm, I'm a new person that came to this council. I was not trained or in the line to run for this position. I came with an open mind, always do, and I come with no agenda or political maneuvering in mind. That's never been my thing. But I know that it resonates with you because that's most often what you probably see. Don't assume that with me. I'm, I'm not that politician. I'm a, I'm a servant of the people. And if the servant, the, the people ask me as a servant to do something and they want to honor someone, I'm certainly going to do that. Whether you think it's, the motive is pure or not, I don't have to be subjected to that. I want to do my job. And that, part of that is doing my job. But I think we should be clear, why are you doing it? Think it's a political maneuver or singling someone out. Just be clear on that. Don't change it when it's convenient, you know? Just be clear, be consistent, and follow the protocol. That's all I'm asking. And I, and I asked what the protocol was, and I followed that.
Michael.
Mr. Mayor, I thank you. I'm embarrassed to be sitting here having this conversation drag out so far on January 3rd, the first meeting of our year. You know why? Because we just left the city council chambers packed with people who are here expecting us to organize ourselves and get to work on their behalf for the city of Virginia Beach. And what are we doing? The first thing out the gate, we're talking about a resolution and debating about a resolution to honor a former member who is worthy of recognition. debating about a resolution to honor a former member who is worthy of recognition in the same fashion as each and every other departing member. I think it's time we get back to work on behalf of the people of Virginia Beach and let's do what they sent us here to do.
Okay, Chris.
This is a part of our agenda, we are at work.
So part of the agenda, we, can we move on with the rest of the agenda?
Okay, at this point, I'm just going to say something and, uh, we'll bring people to closure. Yeah, okay, Chris, I'm sorry.
As a, as a new council member, and I've had the opportunity to speak to Sabrina because I'm going to call the individuals so I can get clarity. And I felt comfortable with her response. One of my concerns is, I did sign that original document that day and I don't want to sign documents sent through here. Let's represent. It has to be accurate. So we're, I know we're going to make mistakes and take place. But that's my concern is, I didn't understand the process. I had no problem signing that day. Aaron served well. Um, but it does need to be accurate for that.
Okay.
Can I ask the accuracy you're referring to as I don't know what you're.
In one of the early wherestas, it said that he was, he's co-chair of the Hampton Roads Plan and District Commission. And he's not even on the commission, much less being co-chair, a vice chair. And I think it would be terrible to prove something that we've all signed that claims something that is obvious that is not accurate.
And I think I took that specifically from his bio. So if the bio is not correct, I, that's not something that, that I would know. But Amanda did figure that out later and we went back and changed it, which is why we were going to sign new ones today. I don't see them here, but we're supposed to sign new ones today. But, um, folks make er- make, they make errors. Fol- that, that happens all the time. This information, though, was taken from his bio. Anyone's bio, you would think it would be correct.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to bring closure to this. You know, it's the type of thing, as, um, I indicated the other day, I was not, I was reluctant to sign it. And I think, uh, part of my, and let me put it this way. I have tremendous amount of respect for Aaron. You know, we've, uh, we've had cross swords a couple of times, but we've always became friends. There was one time we had a good confrontation here and we went out and I let him read the, uh, proclamation for Louisa Strayhorn. You know, you, you know, after, you know, Aaron and I will be friends when all is said and done. Okay, that, you know, that's been my history. And it was very important for me also to let Jennifer know that I intend to build positive bridge with you and make your first meeting, you know, extremely, uh, you know, welcome and everything going forward. But, you know, it's a tough thing right now. But the thing is, you know, uh, you know, if Aaron wins, you know, that's the will of the people. And there's nothing to say that we can't wait until Aaron is available, when they are all available, to be recognized in a very, very proper way. And if that takes us beyond the retreat, you know, so be it. But once again, I think this would be a topic for the retreat. But as for, you know, tonight, what I would like to do is just, you know, respectfully say that we honor, uh, Aaron Rouse. And then, uh, you know, we felt it just more appropriate that at a time fitting when all of them, we were a team together. You know, I'll tell you what, I, I'm serious about what I said last, uh, you know, at the dais. You know, we went through a lot as a council together last time. Did we have our differences? You betcha. But when it came time to galvanize and get through the tough times, we were there. So with your permission, we'll just say, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to, you know, not cancel it to do it, but we're just going to postpone at a time where everybody can make it, okay? Okay, thank you.
So, under ordinance and resolutions, um, it's a pretty brief thing, there's five. Does anybody have any issues with any of these? And they all go on consent. And we only have, Mrs. Mesmer speaking, um, two people for open dialogue and that's, that's it. Is that settled, everything? Are they good?
You took it easy on us.
I know, I was looking at this.
Can I trust you? Do not get used to this. This is not a typical consent agenda. It's usually about six pages because Mark just comes up with stuff.
When we were working with the manager, we said, let's, we want a nice pleasant day for everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're.
I want a clarification on what council liaison, what do you mean, what is that? Because we missed that.
Oh, we're going to talk about that in a little bit.
We're going to be going to a closed session. In essence, but, you know, can answer your question right off the bat. In addition to our, uh, Tuesday duties, you know, there are a number of boards and commissions where, you know, like Aaron was with the hu- uh, with Minority Business Council, he was with HRT, uh, and had a number of other things. We have the Human Rights Commission, we got various, and Sundry's thing. So we ask for, uh, thing you may be asked, uh, you'll be a liaison on the Atlantic Art Project. Okay, you know, that type of thing. All right, so, uh, at this point, are we ready for closed? Okay? And what I do now, folks, is, you know, before we can go into a closed session, I have to read a declaration. And then the council will vote on to go. And then we ask for, uh, you know, people, uh, that don't have, you know, that are not interested parties, you know, to leave. And we have what we call executive session, okay? The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Perspective business or industry. Discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing businesses or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest of locating or expanding its facilities in the community pursuant to Section 2.23711A5. And that would be one in District 9 and one in District 3. Uh, legal matters. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding to specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.23711A8. Lynch versus City of Virginia Beach. Uh, personal matters. Uh, discussion or dis- uh, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees for a public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. And that would be council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Move my motion in a second.
Councilmember Berluti?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Remick?
Aye.
Councilmember Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schulman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Houghton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Danner?
Aye.
But I voted one Missouri, voted to go to a closed session.
Okay, we're going to recess into executive session. We thank the folks in the gallery for coming and being part of our, our business today. Thank you.